Trying to break in. I'm trying, I'm trying. Also, though, I did, I will take advantage of this position to tell you that as a member of Kaiser Permanente, Bill and I have already gotten our vaccine. Think about your insurance coverage. Okay, and now it is my duty to call this meeting to order of the February meeting of the Library Board of Trustees, and I will begin with the electronic meeting script. And Jane, I noticed that you're here, so we will just continue as we usually do. We had made contingency plan in case you, your class ran over, but I see you're here, so we're good to go. All right. "To conduct this meeting wholly electronically and to effectuate both the emergency procedures authorized by FOIA and the emergency ordinance, this Library Board of Trustees needs to make certain findings and determinations for the record. First, because each member of this Library Board of Trustees is participating in this meeting from a separate location, we must verify that a quorum of meetings of members is participating and that each member's voice is clear, audible, and at an appropriate volume for all of the other members. Accordingly, I'm going to conduct a roll call and will ask each Library Board member participating in this meeting to state your name and the location from which you are participating. I ask that each of you pay close attention to ensure that you can hear each of your colleagues. Following this roll call, we will vote to establish that every member can hear every other member." Okay, so here we go. Brian Engler?
I can hear you, and I'm calling from my home in Burke, Virginia, on like this background, which is.
Yeah, love the background. Nice. Miriam from Providence?
I can hear you, and I'm in my home in Fairfax.
Okay. Suzanne Levy, Fairfax City?
Hi, I can hear everyone, and I'm here at my home in Fairfax City.
SuJatha Hampton, Draytonsville?
I am here in my home in Great Falls, Virginia.
Sheila Janigo, Hunter Mill?
I could hear you all, and I'm at my home in Reston, Virginia.
Keith Fox, Lee District?
Yes, good evening. I can hear everyone. I'm here in my home in Springfield.
You know, I can, I have trouble hearing you. I don't know if your, if your volume is, could be up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now?
It could be me. That's, I could put my headphones in.
Okay, everyone's nodding, so I'll.
Yeah, I can hear you. No, it's good now. Great, thank you. Gary Russell, Mount Vernon?
I can hear you. I'm at my home in Mount Vernon.
Priscilla Dando, Fairfax County Public Schools?
Good evening. I'm at home in Woodbridge.
Liz Walker, Sully District?
Liz Walker, and I'm at my home in Centerville.
And Phil Rosenthal, Springfield District? Phil Rosenthal, going once?
Is not on the, not on the call yet.
He's not here yet. Okay, well, if I forget to go back, help somebody remind me, okay? "At this point, I will pass the virtual gavel to the vice chair so that I may be heard to make the requisite motion. So I pass the gavel to Jane. And I move that each member's voice may be adequately heard by each other member of this Library Board of Trustees."
Second. Oh, I can't second.
You have to say, yeah, you have to ask for a second.
Second. Second.
Fran?
All in favor? You have to ask for all in favor.
All in favor, hi.
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 Okay, thank you. Now, second, having established that each member's voice may be heard by every other member, we must next establish the nature of the emergency that compels these emergency procedures, the fact that we are meeting electronically, what type of electronic communication is being used, and how we have arranged for public access to this meeting. Therefore, I move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for this board to physically assemble and unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting, and that as such, FOIA's usual procedures, which require the physical assembly of this board and the physical presence of the public, cannot be implemented safely or practically. I further move that this board may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated Zoom meeting, and the public may access this meeting by the link that is, is on our website.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yep.
Hi.
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 Okay, it is so moved. Now, finally, it is next required that all of the matters addressed on today's agenda must address the emergency itself, are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County government, and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations and the discharge of this board's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. It is so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And I'll see, Phil, have you gotten here yet? Okay, we'll keep, we'll keep looking for them. Okay, introduction to the public comment section. "The Library Board wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on library-related issues. It's our policy to hear a maximum of five speakers at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are limited to one public comment during a six-month period. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for their comments. A 30-second warning will be given before each speaker's time is up, and the speaker will be expected to end promptly when time is called. Speakers are requested to pre-register with the library director. However, if there are available public comment slots open at the time of a board meeting, the remaining slots may be filled by individuals registering at the meeting. Board members will not question or respond to speakers." Tonight, there are no registered speakers. Is there anyone attending who would like to register to speak? Or it's too late now? I don't know. It's okay. There's no one here to do that. If anyone wishes to speak at a future meeting, please call the director's office at 703-324-8324. Okay? And now it's my pleasure to introduce our presentation. As we continue becoming introduced to and looking at the library's implementation of the county's One Fairfax policy, tonight, we're going to learn about the Socrates Cafe.
Yeah.
So I Googled it because I wondered what it was. So, Google, Socrates Cafes can be found all over the world. The idea is simple. A group of curious people gather to ponder question and analyze any topic or issue that the group votes to discuss. The goal is to create an atmosphere in which people are comfortable and freely but respectfully expressing their opinions. It was launched over 20 years ago to be an oasis of reasonableness, empathy, and understanding in a desert of rising intolerance and polarization around the world. So that interested me that 20 years ago, this started, we thought it was, we thought we had it now, but. So from Montana to Mumbai, Portland to Tokyo, Sydney to the Twin Cities, hundreds of groups now convene far and wide in public places and spaces, including cyberspace, but also in bricks and mortar locales like schools, churches, community centers, nursing homes, prisons, centers for homeless families, and, everybody? Libraries! Okay, so to give us a picture of the program here, we have tonight Mary Prisby and Nora Wickert. Mary is currently the branch manager at Dolly Madison and is a current member of the FCPL One Fairfax Committee. This is not the only library system she's worked in, nor the only job she's held. Besides her experience in St. Louis and Arlington, she was also a TWA flight attendant. And I remember working in a library where we, we were across the street from a TWI pilot. That was the Westover Library in Arlington, so really long time ago, because we can barely remember right when TWA went out of business. Okay, and Nora is all about programming for adults, multi-generational audiences, readers advisory, and community engagement. She is also not averse to stepping in for a children's storytime and is known to be a Class A puppeteer. So it is my pleasure, Mary and Nora, take it away.
Hi there. Thank you, first of all, for inviting us to share with you a little bit. We at Dolly Madison enjoy a fairly robust programming schedule, which we take a lot of pride in. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of the background about how Socrates Cafe came about, and then I'll turn it over to Nora because it really is her baby. So about four years ago, I and Nora and our colleague Kathy were actually trying to come up with ideas to bring seniors into the library. And so I ended up doing a card, like card-playing program, and our colleague did a yoga program, and Nora came across the book, Socrates Cafe, written by Christopher Phillips, where that, that was kind of without her thinking about this whole idea. And when she looked into it, she realized she couldn't really pull off the whole scope of Socrates Cafe the way that it's normally done. It really requires a big commitment from people to come back repeatedly and so forth. But Nora decided to make it her own program. So when she first brought it up, I was actually a little bit concerned because it sounded scary to me. Nora is pretty fearless, so she went for it. And as often happens with programs is sometimes they work out, sometimes they don't, sometimes they work at one branch, not another. And sometimes programs evolve into something that you hadn't planned on, which is the case with Socrates Cafe. We were really targeting seniors, but as Nora quickly found out, this had a much broader appeal, and she'll speak to that more. But her program quickly gained in popularity. She started off with maybe four attendees, and then after a couple of years, we were thinking about splitting off into two groups because she was getting over two dozen attendees per program. So we were kind of at that point when COVID hit. And of course, we had to stop doing all in-person programming. And this was one of the programs that we all thought it was worth, you know, giving it a shot to try to do it digitally. And it has proven successful as a digital program as well. So with that, I'm going to turn, turn it over to Nora and let her fill you in a little bit more.
Hello. Thanks for inviting me to talk about my favorite program. I have just a small, short PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll take questions. It's not coming out.
We, we were able to see your screen for a minute there.
Fran, while they're sitting up, can you note that I've.
Yes, thank you, Phil. Jane told me.
Traffic getting to my office. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Got your mark down.
Okay, so Socrates Cafe is, what is it? It's just a chance for ordinary people to wrestle with the big questions in life. It's a staff-moderated discussion moderated by me. That's why Mary was so shocked that I wanted to do this program because moderating a program sounded scary to her. And if I had thought about it, I probably wouldn't do it, but I did find out through these last four years that I'm actually a pretty good moderator. We, what we do is we pick random questions that I just got off the internet. In person, I would have people just pick them out of a big fishbowl of questions, and everybody would get a chance to ask the question to the remainder of the group. We do not discuss politics. And that's because I felt that most people have enough of that in their life, and it doesn't need to be anything but fighting. And, you know, we're not a debating society here, so no politics. And for the most part, people do adhere to that. So who is invited to attend? Everybody. People from all walks of life are enthusiastically encouraged to attend and contribute their perspectives. Although it did start out as a program for older adults, like scheduling it for midday on a Monday, I've had people from every generation, from a 20-year-old that just graduated college, 30-year-old that would take her lunch break to attend. Every generation, I think the oldest person that I had who was a regular was 85. So we've had people from many different countries, China, Vietnam, India, Finland, Israel, Colombia, Mexico, Poland, Iran, France. The list goes on and on and on. In fact, one of the women that was from Poland recently told me, and this was at our Monday program, that she actually not only wanted to have a discussion that didn't involve politics, but she also wanted to use it as a chance to improve her English, which I thought was pretty cool because that gives the whole program just one more little fun aspect. And people from every different religion, although we don't discuss politics, religion, we do delve into. And in fact, sometimes we get into politics, but not current events. So what are the rules? The rules are, and normally I do remind everybody of the rules. In COVID time, I'm a little bit more lax about that. But the rules are to be respectful, be open to what others have to say, even if you disagree. No getting personal. Personal put-downs are taboo, and I will call people out on it. Luckily, I've not had to do that. Listen carefully. Don't interrupt. Listen to what the speaker has to say. Share the floor. And people like to talk, and then that's probably the one I have to moderate the most is to stop talking and let somebody else weigh in on a question. So. So some of the questions that we've pondered at Socrates Cafe are, have we become less happy in this age of technology? Do acts of kindness have a motive? Are there limitations on free speech? Is having a big ego a negative trait or a positive trait? Things like that. And the funny thing to me is that people start out one way, and oftentimes, by the end of the program, they'll have changed their minds after listening to different perspectives on it. So what are people saying? This is the highlight of programming for me, is to get feedback from people. Some of the recent ones were, I'm really enjoying these meetings. I enjoy talking to people that are different than me. I've been wanting to meet and talk to people from other walks and not discuss politics. I'm glad to be here. The lady that made that comment, actually, that was at the January meeting, and she was also almost in tears because she was older. She was staying home, staying safe, but she didn't have anybody to talk to. And so she was really happy that she found our group, which made me really happy, too. This is amazing. You cannot talk like this in my country. That was a discussion we were having. That was in person, and the woman was from China. And everybody seemed kind of stunned because we weren't talking about anything like political or anything. And she then described that, no, they would come to you and arrest you all for talking like this. And so that put another perspective on, on our thinking about everything, about kind of how lucky we are that we can just talk. And my favorite one, I'm really learning to be a better listener. Because I think.
Excuse me?
Listening to other people is important, and that will get us through.
Anyone hear me?
And so join us. This program is held monthly, the second Monday of the month, at 2:00, and we love to have newcomers.
Yeah, Keith, Keith, I can hear you. Nora, your, your screen is just the black, your name. It wasn't showing the PowerPoint.
Oh, I was aware that was just me, but yeah. Where's Nora?
I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
So Nora's, Nora's voice keeps.
The slides did not show, the PowerPoint show did not, did not show. Can you hear me?
I can hear. Yeah, we're having some issues with the sound here, too.
Would anyone like to ask any questions? I think Liz has her hand up, and then Jane.
I'm sorry. Is Nora able to hear?
I'm here.
Okay. Nora, I was wondering, I might have missed it. How often do you have these sessions?
How? Once a month.
Once a month. And do you find that you have regulars that come, show up every month, pretty much?
I didn't hear that.
Do you have regulars?
Oh, I do have regulars. I had a lot of regulars in person, and they actually help moderate the group. But I do have regulars, yes.
So then you have a, you, what is the mixture normally in your meetings between your regulars and new people?
Usually, it's about 50/50, in person and online.
I think I'll try to, I think I'll try to join you one of these months.
I think Jane had a question.
Nora, I really enjoyed your presentation. And so it just got my wheels turning. When you choose a question, is it as you gather and you choose a question and toss it out and you just talk from there, or do you do any prep work? And when you have, if you know of a subject ahead of time, do you also line up book titles for people who are getting really revved up about the subject and might want to check something out?
No, really, what I have is a giant bowl that's full of pieces of paper that have the questions, so I never know what's coming. And I let other people choose them, so it's, yeah, it's always a surprise.
And about the books? Oh, you said, did you say know about the books?
No, you couldn't do that. I couldn't do that, so I don't know what the topic's going to be.
Oh, that's right, yeah. No, I think Sheila was next. I think Sheila had a question, and then Miriam and Phil. So Sheila?
Okay, I have attended Nora, your Socrates Cafe, and I found it the most refreshing experience. I had not, I had no idea what to expect. I thought it was going to be very serious and pondering. And so I loved the fishbowl because so many of my friends and I talk politics all the time. I have to say, I'm kind of sick of everybody's opinion. So being able to sit back and really listen to people and not be kind of put into a lane the way we usually, that, that my friends and I usually are, we have our lanes and we know what we're going to say. It was a wonderful experience, and the question that I remember most from my Socrates Cafe was that acts of kindness. That was a very interesting discussion, you know, is it something that we're, we learn? Is it something that is inherent to human beings? It was, it was really very interesting. I can't remember what, and, and what I loved about it was it was no conclusion, you know, it was like, all right, now we've all said this, so this must be the conclusion of the discussion. It was just totally random. And as I said, it was very refreshing, and I'm looking forward to joining another group. And when I was telling some friends about it, everybody was, oh, I've always wanted to do that. So it, it has a lot of appeal to lots of different people, so. And I think that in person will be even more fun, but you do a great job online, so.
And I think, thank you, and I think Miriam had a question.
No, I was, I'm sorry if I missed this, but while you've been doing it online, have you been just having one big discussion? Or have you tried to use like the breakout room feature on Zoom where you can send a few people off, have a little private conversation on the Zoom?
Online have been smaller than the ones that in person, so we don't really need any breakout groups.
What are you, what are you averaging?
Everyone's really good about giving each other time.
Yeah. How many people do you think join you usually online?
So we have anywhere from five, I think eight was the highest online so far.
That's a nice, that's a nice group for.
It's a nice group, yeah.
Conversation.
Yeah, in person, we had 26, which was getting kind of unmanageable. But I would say in person, we also serve coffee and cookies, so.
Okay, thanks, Miriam. Phil had his hand, Phil had a question.
Nora, let me thank you very, very much for doing this because I think it adds a whole lot to it. But the thing I have, it's not concern, but it's not supposed to be political, you say. But when you bring the subject up of censorship by Facebook, censorship by Twitter or something, that is very controversial, you know, to people that maybe have a conservative point of view, that that's exactly, you know, their, their contention is that's exactly what these media sites are doing. So how do you get around the quote-unquote "non-political" when it is a very political discussion? You follow me? And I'm not picking sides either way. I'm just saying it's a very political discussion.
Yeah, we don't really have any political topics. I mean, the things, the things that I've, the questions that I've gotten off the internet that everybody picks from are just really philosophical questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think SuJatha had her hand up. Priscilla, did you, too? Okay, SuJatha.
Hi, Nora and Ray. Good to see you. I had two questions. Did you say what days you do this? I would love to, to watch.
It's the second Monday of the month at 2:00. Registration opens four weeks before, so March is now open.
And you, you register right on the regular library site?
Correct.
Wonderful. And secondly, what I think is kind of interesting, you know, goes with what Phil just asked regarding how you avoid things being political and whatever, you know, really, you know, everything is political if you were to go take it politically, right? So really, it sounds to me like the way that you're avoiding it is that the folks who come are really not trying to make it political. And so you're avoiding that because of the way that people are interacting with the question. Maybe to avoid that themselves is why they show up, not trying to argue. And like, just not trying to get into an argument, just trying to have a conversation without, if, if you, if you are trying not to have an argument, then maybe you won't have an argument. I don't know. It sounds kind of fun. I would love to do this. I'm going to get off of this call when we finish, and I'm going to register to come.
Anybody else? I didn't want to miss anybody, but I think everybody did get their chance. So, yeah, that was, that, that was great. Yeah, Liz has another question.
Comment. I really liked what Jane said about the library and books and relating it back. Do, since they're registered, you have their emails, do you not, Nora?
I do have their email addresses, yeah.
Have you ever thought about just top trying, it might not be of interest, but trying to put a few book, books together, suggestions after the fact, for them to explore the topic a little bit more in depth or something? But that really relates it back to the library and the library services. I really personally appreciated that comment, Jane.
Yeah, and I could do something like that, but I often find a lot of times in these groups, we become each other's readers advisors about the topics. Because somebody will inevitably say, I just read a book about, and then they'll say whatever the book title is, and a lot of times I'll be like, we have that because, you know, I just saw it on, you know, the new shelf or whatever. So, so, yeah, we, we do recommend books to each other in these discussions.
Yeah, and I would think, too, like, here's the, here's a link to the catalog, you know, with some, some, the subjects that we talked about, and, you know, people can do their searching and see whatever they come up with, which would be great. Okay, I think Suzanne has her hand up, a real hand up.
Real hand, yeah. I just wondered, how many topics do you discuss at a given meeting?
It depends on. It depends on, um, a lot of factors, like how many people are there and how much we have to say about it. There've been times in person where we've discussed two. And there have been times where, you know, with a smaller group, we can get through like maybe six. So.
Does, I'm not familiar with the book you showed us. Um, does that give you suggested topics?
No, they do it a completely different way and it takes forever. They all kind of vote on what to talk about and it's just really involved. And so that's how I kind of made it so I could do it at the library was to take that out of the equation. And I just Googled philosophical questions, put them on pieces of paper and stuck them in a bowl.
I like that. Yeah. Okay. Oh, Sheila? Sheila, you are muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
I just want to say that the fact that there's no set topic, the discussion is so spontaneous, there, there really, it really does not lend itself to studying up on something. I think that the spontaneity of this group is just so refreshing. So you don't feel like you have to prepare for something. You don't feel like now I have to go and read up more about it unless it's something that you're interested in. So, um, I just want to say that I think Nora is doing a wonderful job in this, the way she presents this program. So.
Okay, great. It sounds really fun. And, uh, yeah, I'm gonna see if I can sign up or, we have a group of friends. We get together, we Zoom every Saturday at five thirty and after all this time, it gets kind of the same, you know, we did this and we just thought, what are you watching? I think, I might think I might want to incorporate this, like liven things up a little bit. So thank you both very much. Really appreciated it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And okay, I didn't know you had your hand up. Yeah. Okay, great. Okay, now, um, it's time for the minutes. And I just want to say that the January statistical snapshot will be included in the February meetings because minutes, because it wasn't quite ready yet. Uh, so, uh, the January thirteen minutes were sent out, um, and we're ready for a motion to accept.
I'm moved to accept the January minute as presented.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about the minutes? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as distributed, please say aye or raise your hand. Okay, the minutes are passed. Thank you very much. Uh, now we're onto the chair report. Which is me. I get to talk again. Okay, um, ALA, American Library Association has two conferences each year. The big one in the summer and then a smaller working session that is also always just called Midwinter. So if you're not in the library, you know, sort of in group or whatever, you might have heard the term midwinter. Oh, yeah, when they go to midwinter and you're like, what is that? What is that? Well, it's smaller and it's a chance for the people who are on all the different committees that make the association work, actually get a chance to meet. And I know, once, and also the publishers are there, um, you know, and I know I was once, uh, I was doing some work for Scholastic and they had a meeting and then a really nice, uh, like luncheon. So it's like, it's great to get on something and then be able to go there. Um, but the most notable aspect of Midwinter is actually the announcement of the books that, that their committees have selected for recognition of excellence. And I, maybe I'm wrong about this, but I think the most anticipated ones are the Caldecott Award, which is the best picture book, and the Newberry, which is the best, uh, children's fiction book. However, the meeting is always at eight AM on the last day of Midwinter. I've never, I never went to it. When I went to Midwinter, I never got up to go to an eight AM meeting. But this year, thank you Jessica and library admin for the providing the opportunity for us to attend virtual. I was able to just come downstairs and actually attend my first awards meeting at eight AM in the morning. So I had no idea. It was like three, uh, pages of awards. There are awards for so many different categories. It was really, it was really amazing. And they did a great job of showing who's on the committee because these are really dedicated people. If you're on one of these committees, you get a gazillion books to read during the year and not just read, but read and evaluate, is this really good? Is it an award winner? Is it an honor book or whatever? So, um, so that, that eight AM meeting, and it's not only that librarians and especially like in collection development, people want to see that because it's like, oh, we don't have that book. Quick, order it. And then the other people who are dying to find that out are the publishers because that means big bucks for them. Because if it's an ALA award winner, then they're going to get orders from libraries all across the country. So it's a really big deal. And, um, I was just thrilled to have the opportunity to go. I mean, it's a librarian thrill. Okay, nerdy. Okay. But, um, the Newberry Award went to When You Trap A Tiger, which also won the Asian Pacific American Award for Literature. And I, I just finished it. It's a really interesting, um, book. And then the Caldecott winner was We Are Water Protectors. And I haven't, I reserved it. I immediately got on the website and reserved all these books too. So I just want to recommend to you, if you didn't know what Midwinter was, now you know more than you ever thought you wanted to know. Um, but you could, all you need to do now is just Google ALA Awards twenty twenty and you'll see the list of books and you can print it out. And then you can go on the catalog site and reserve a book or two for a really good read. That's my report. And now we move on to committee reports, starting with Suzanne Levy of the foundation.
Okay, the Library Foundation Board has not met, um, in the last month. I believe it's next month that we meet again. But I, you all got an email about the cooking program, Let's Cook Together, which is a fundraiser for the foundation. And I would urge you to, uh, participate and also check out the Library Foundation website because then you can see what's going on at the foundation. And that's my report.
Okay, I think Phil has a question.
The only question is, I said the contribution because I don't know how to quote.
I saw you mention that that, I'm sure all contributions are gratefully accepted, but Phil, this was your chance to learn a little something. Come on.
Well, in the collection business, as I was saying, the check is in the mail.
That's right. I was going to sign up for it, but I'm taking a virtual Pilates class that's on Tuesday night. So I can't be cooking and eating at the same time.
I asked my husband and he said, I can cook. Why would I want to go to a class?
It looked really fun because they send you the list of ingredients and then it's a chef, it's a restaurant chef leading the cook. So I, I really wanted to go. I think it'll be really fun. Okay, Finance Committee, Miriam.
Yes. So, um, so I'm signed up for the cooking class. So we'll see how it goes. But, but the, I, there is no report since we haven't had a finance committee, except we are going to have a, a short finance committee meeting. It's going to get scheduled at some point, Jessica, right? And I.
March second.
March second. Uh, March second, did we pick a time?
Three.
Three.
Three? Is that what we said? Okay. Um, well, I'm going to write that down, uh, because the county budget will be being released. It is unfortunately not going to be a very exciting, um, meeting because we don't anticipate any changes. It's, but, but we're very grateful that it's, you know, as flat as it is. So that is the finance committee report, March second.
Any questions? I forgot to ask for questions on foundation, but I think you're all good. Uh, outreach, Brian?
On outreach, we're following the leadership of all the other committees and have not had a meeting recently. We do have one set up though, two PM on the nineteenth of February where we'll look principal, well, I guess the principal point of business is the next quarter's talking points.
Right.
That's it.
Anybody?
Brian, when is that meeting?
Two PM on the nineteenth, which I think is a Friday.
And it'll be a Zoom?
Zoom meeting, oh yeah.
Say it again.
Yes, Zoom.
Is there any way, um, just as a follow up for that, uh, Jessica, that we can get those on our calendars? I know they come in emails, the invites, but do they actually come to the calendars also for our Fairfax County?
We certainly, we certainly can.
Yeah. What I do, Keith, uh, for all these meetings is I discovered that you can't put it on your personal calendar from the Outlook directly. So I just forward all these messages to my personal email and then add it to my Google Calendar and it pops right in.
But to Keith's question, I can send you an Outlook invite with the Zoom link in it to your county email.
Right. I appreciate that. That'd be helpful.
Jessica, you'll send it to all of us? Yeah, okay. I mean, I have it on my calendar, but I don't have the, the connectivity, you know, to get to it. Make it.
Can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I like to then, you know, just, uh, go to the FPL trustees. I just Google that and you go right to the site where the, all the meetings and the links are and you can just click on them. And it's just a fast way to get there because navigating through everything else, but just that FPL trustees and you're right there. Now, policy, I know.
Well, we've been working. We've been meeting. Yes. So we had a meeting on January the twenty first. And our next meeting is going to be February the twenty third. Um, in your packets today, you have Policy W, which is just for, um, what do we call it? It's just a little.
Consideration item.
Just a consideration item. So please read it because at our March, what is February? It's February now. No, it's, yes, February now. It's March meeting. We will be discussing it. It'll be an action item. It will be discussing and voting on it. And we are still working on the bylaws. So the February twenty third meeting, we will continue discussing and reviewing the bylaws. So, um, so we've been busy and I do invite anybody who wants to join the meeting. You're welcome to come and just, uh, I, I do it, Fran does. I go to the web, our library website and, um, check on meetings and, and there'll be a link there. So, so that's, that's it.
Yeah. And, um, as Sheila extended the invitation, so do I, um, with the reminder that, um, even if you're not on the committee, you're entitled to vote. So you can have a say in what's going on in the work of the committee. So please do. So next we turn it over to Jessica. And I forgot to say, thank you Christine for everything you did and welcome back, Jessica.
I also want to extend my thanks to both Christine and Bobby. They made it remarkably easy for me to take the time off to play with little baby Hannah. I didn't do a very good job of staying disconnected. As you may have noticed from my early warning emails, but I, I gave it a good go. And in case I missed you all at the beginning of today's meeting, here is baby Hannah. Looking grumpy there. Now here is where she has discovered she has a fist and it tastes delicious.
Yeah.
Just to make cooling sounds, you know?
Yes, I, I have turned into that person where like, look at all the pictures. My baby is so cute.
So we'll have to have, uh, the director's baby report as well.
Yes, the director's baby report. I, uh, I was hoping she'd be awake so I could just shove her head into the camera, but she is not. So you all are, are saved that. So there's your brief baby moment. Now I will transition into actual work things. Again, thank you to Christine and Bobby. They are fantastic and will continue to be fantastic, uh, now that we're back to our wonderful triplet set of library staff. Uh, so the first item on your report is the Staff Excellence Awards, which are open through the fourteenth. I just took a look. We have forty three nominations right now, which is fantastic. And a number of the supervisors, board supervisor members have included it in their newsletters. So thank you to, to them for doing that. You also have some updates in there about the very successful Food for Fine's program. We collected almost six thousand pounds of food this year, which is fantastic in supporting those who are food insecure in our communities right now. And we had our first ebook of the month program. The adult title was a little bit more successful than the children's title. And then this, this month, February, we are, excuse me, we have a teen title and an adult mock fiction title. So we're trying a lot of different things to see what really has the most oomph to it. And our wonderful collection development staff are analyzing cost per serve to make sure that we're, we're best utilizing the resources that we have. And I know many of you use our e-magazines. They are transitioning over very, very shortly to Libby. In fact, if you want, you can go search for them now. Uh, we're not publicizing it yet, but you can take a look around. It's, it's a little funky because, uh, many of the e-magazines are owned by the Library of Virginia. So you actually have to log into that account, not your, your FPL account. Uh, so we'll be putting out some, um, tips and tricks on that as well. And a couple of other brief updates. Um, Fran had mentioned ALA Midwinter and I had sent around an email to you all about ALA proper, the, the full conference that happens in June of the, the year. It has been moved entirely online this year. And so we would be happy to support any of you who would like to attend because we don't have to pay for you to fly there this year, which is always nice. Uh, the full conference runs about five days, but usually like the, the bracket days are, are full day sessions and committee meetings. So there's really like two and a half days of solid, good programming in there. The program is not available yet. It should be out mid-March, April-ish, somewhere in there. As soon as it's out, I'll send you all the link and you can see what you might want to attend and if you would like to participate in some of the virtual sessions. And then just a brief update on some of the, um, services going on for library. We've been back on curbside for almost a month now. It is going very well. And one of the new things we've offered for curbside service is curbside printing. Uh, we know that some folks really value the use of our computers and our printers and copiers. And we were able to make it work out so that you can use our wireless printing system and have us actually drop off your print jobs outside. Uh, library IT staff checked for me this morning and we've had, uh, five hundred and fifty seven documents printed at two thousand, two hundred and seventy three pages across the, the last month. So not a huge amount of use, but enough that, you know, people are taking advantage of it, which is really nice.
Jessica?
Yes.
How does that work?
Uh, so there's, um, there's a, a printing system. You can pull it up on your phones called Smart Alec. And you can send it to our printers and then we'll put it out for you on the curbside pickup table. Yeah, there's detailed instructions on how to use it on the library's, um, research guides. I'm not going to try and walk it through, but I would be happy to talk to you about it offline.
No, no, just I was wondering how that happened.
Yeah, it's, it's an, it's an application you can use on your phone.
That might, I don't know if you want to advertise it, but that could be potentially a talking point.
Definitely, definitely. Um, in addition to curbside services, we're still having really great virtual services. And we had our Kylie Reed event on Sunday. Uh, she wrote Such A Fun Age. And we had about a hundred and twenty five people who attended that event, which was lovely. And if you're interested, our next big virtual author event is Kristen Hannah, who will be here in April. We have a very lovely introducer this year who is showing you the book. Jane's gonna, Jane's gonna introduce her at that session. Uh, as of yesterday, we had four hundred and seventy people signed up already. So you will be one of the horde that is going to enjoy her, her, her talk there. I think that was all of my updates. I am mostly caught up on emails and other things. So if I've missed anything that you sent around, um, my apologies. Feel free to.
I have a question if I may.
Uh, yes. And then Suzanne had one as well.
Oh, okay. Uh, have you, have we made any progress on expanding the Wi-Fi coverage out into the parking lot and marking spots?
Yes, great question. Yes, we are working on that. We have, um, we have the first locations identified that are going to have the expansions and we've got the contracts in place. It's just getting it done. Suzanne, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a couple. Um, you said that you had notified the supervisors about the Staff Excellence Program. Did city council get notified?
I'm going to say that I don't know, but I will confirm for you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's getting close, but.
There's always time.
And also is there a fee for the printing?
Yes. Oh, no, there's not. Christine says.
I was gonna say it would be hard to collect money.
We are very kind people. We print all of your things that you want and just leave it as a gift for you on the curbside table.
I think that's terrific.
Okay, that's one of the reasons we haven't really widely advertised it.
I understand. I would think that.
It's not a cattle call for all of your printing needs. If we can help you, we will.
I'll have a book I like to publish.
Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so the next item on the agenda is in fact the, um, consideration item that Sheila mentioned. so the next item on the agenda is in fact the, um, consideration item that Sheila mentioned. Um, and so what you have is the current version. And then the recommended version. And then the markup, which is, you know, you, it's, it's impossible to read, but it shows you the changes that the committee made with all the cross outs and everything like that. Now, um, I don't, I don't remember. Do I, do we read that tonight or at the March meeting?
No, you'll read it at the March meeting. Yeah, the, when it's a consideration item, it's there for you all to take the next month to review it and process it and come back and merge with any discussion.
Right. So, uh, yeah, yes, that, that was going to be my charge to all of you, um, to do that. So that's good. And, um, ready for the round table and, um, something, I forgot to write it down. There's something I was going to say, but I, anyway, um, I do want to thank those of you who were able, who had the time to contact, um, our senators about the Build America's Library Act. Um, we sent that information around and, and VLA made it really easy to just click on it and there it went. So, um, if you had a chance to do that, thank you. And we'll start and, um, let's start with Sujatha.
Not a single thing to report to you all, so.
Okay. How about you, Priscilla? How's the school going?
I will, um, take up Sujatha's time because I have several things to share. Thank you for that gift. Uh, they're all really great things. First off, a huge shout out to the Reston Friends. Um, I know for sure they did this at Dogwood and I have a feeling they've done this at more elementary schools. And, and, um, yeah, maybe Jessica can share more detail, but, um, you know, during this pandemic, we've had some great success in FCPS about getting books in the hands of kids. We've been on NBC News. We've had, uh, newspaper articles. We just had Colin Powell Elementary took, um, the assistance of bus drivers and cafeteria workers to deliver 8,000 books to just kids in pre-K one, pre-K kindergarten, first grade. And there are so many needs for, for kids having access to books right now still. So, um, the Reston Friends made some genre mystery bags of books from, I'm assuming donations and dropped them off with, um, I know at least the Dogwood Elementary School. And they were a huge hit and these are books that kids can keep, which just means the world. Uh, we know that all the studies that prove that when students own or when children own their own books, it is an indicator of, of a step into success even for the rest of their life. So thank you for the, um, effort that went along with that. And please, anyone can interject, Sheila, if you want to.
Yeah, I'd like to fill in some of the blanks. I'm glad you brought it up. I too wanted to talk about it. Um, it was, it was a wonderful, they, they raised five, $15,000 from donations. They distributed to over 2,000 books. And it was also a community effort. We have a bookstore, scroll book here in Reston. So that bookstore gave, um, large discounts so they could buy more books. Um, Jersey, um, it's a delic-, um, a sandwich shop, Jersey's. Jersey Mike's, um, donated brown paper bags. So the books could be put into these clean, clean paper bags and, uh, they had, um, the four books, the four schools at Dogwood, you're right about that, Priscilla. Um, Hunter's Woods, Forest Edge and South Lake School. And, um, I think that one of the district, another distribution time is going to be in March and I'm hoping that I can go down to Dogwood, which is my school and, um, you know, help them out with my mask, but it's wonderful. And I was going to thank Priscilla for working with Reston.
Well, I, I didn't mean to steal your thunder and the, the, um.
I was going to interrupt you into it. Yeah.
The credit on the FCPS side goes to Kim Segal, our elementary library specialist, who was connecting with the schools. But the main thing is this was an effort and even greater than I imagined, uh, that really makes a difference. And so I'm just, I'm on behalf of the students and who were able to benefit from it. I, I just wanted to share appreciation. Um, really quickly, I also wanted to, um, say that our, um, school and public library partnership is really taking off in these last couple of months. We meet monthly with some representatives from, uh, branch youth librarians and some, uh, FCPS school librarians. And already we're, we're seeing dividends and the energy in this group is tremendous. Um, we've done a simple thing that's already had, I just wanted to give a short example, um, a real impact. Uh, so for example, uh, we updated the directory so that every school knows the contact at their local library branch. And every local library branch knows the name and contact information of every school librarian in their area. And already we had, um, one of our librarians, Petra Sherrett, reach out to Amy, and I don't know how to say her last name, and she's amazing at, um, thank you, at POHIC. Um, because our students have been gobbling up all of our ebooks. And, uh, she was, didn't have enough choice and wanted more always available ebooks, which Jessica can tell you are super expensive. Um, and, uh, because the directory, they were able to connect and not only get the information, um, around the always available ebooks, but also share, um, about the one month, one book program that also has, um, books for kids on it. So, uh, wanted to thank the members of the committee, Amy, for stepping in also as, uh, a member of the planning of the committee. And then Ted, of course, who's, um, our partner and Kim Segal again, who've been working really hard. I had more to share. I will wait for next time, but we have lots of really exciting things, um, coming out of that committee that I think is going to bring us even closer together. Um, and then I wanted to, um, also say that I enjoyed very much the Jane Harper event, which was the conversation with David Baldacci. And I've probably seen him about 12 times and he's just such a natural conversationalist. So I never miss it, but Jane was a new author to me. So now that was, uh, very beneficial. Uh, appreciated that very much. Um, and lastly, when we're talking about ALA awards, I spent three wonderful years on the Alex Awards Committee that Nick Hornby calls the Not Boring Awards. They are a list of 10 books that are published every year that are written for adults, but have appeal to teenagers. So that's the award of my heart. And I did do my duty in, um, the Prince Award at one year, which is like the Newberry for YA and you don't do anything else that entire year except read wonderful books. So thank you. Thank you for indulging me. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you, Priscilla. Yeah, that was a word, and a word I didn't know about, but then when they showed, they had the committee and they had radio and it's like, oh, I gotta read those books too. It's great. How about you, Gary? Got anything for us tonight?
Just want to thank Mary and Nora for their presentation. It, uh, it, it, it seems to me it's just such an outstanding example of how our staff over and over is so innovative. And, and also so flexible in dealing with the COVID restrictions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Gary. Uh, Keith, how about you?
Yeah, I have a question, um, this is private, Jessica, and then I have a statement. How are people finding out, um, about the events, like authors, series and those things? Are you, are you guys tracking like how they're finding out about it? Like is it advertisements? Is it Twitter? Is it like, what's the, where is the traffic coming from, I guess?
That's an excellent question. Uh, we actually have Erin Julius, our marketing director on, on our Zoom session. So I'll ask her to respond because she will have a much more comprehensive response than I will. But before she does, she pinged me a minute ago and said, don't forget to tell them about the next author event that you forgot about, which is Mary Benedict's. Um, her event is on March 4th. And several of her books are going to be available as unlimited use starting tomorrow. So there's the plug and then I will pass it over to Erin to talk about how we get people connected to the events.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, Jessica. Yes, I'm super excited about the March 4th event because she's my favorite author. So I had that top of mind. Um, great question. Right now it's a little bit tricky because, um, there aren't a whole bunch of people getting curbside, certainly not the entire audience that we would want to reach. Um, and obviously nobody's going into the branch, so they're not looking at flyers or anything. So we're relying heavily on social media right now. That's a lot of Facebook. We have more than 13,000 followers there. We have more than 7,000 followers on Twitter and we have more than 2,000 on Instagram. So heavily relying on, um, all that social media right now. We also, um, created some flyers because back when we rolled back to curbside, that post was shared widely and we got, um, numerous new followers on Facebook. So that told me there are a lot of people who would follow the library if they were aware that we had these channels. So we created, um, some quarter page flyers to go into curbside bag so that people know where to find us. And, um, they actually are at the printer today. We are creating some beautiful bookmarks. Um, that will also, so people can save them. They'll be in curbside bags with the physical books, but people can save those so that they can refer, um, to, to our social media and follow all of that. Um, we wish we could do more, but we're sort of, um, limited in what we can do right now. Um, there are tons and tons and tons of events, lots of Black History Month events. Um, lots of great author events coming up, a million storytimes. Um, so, and we also have the Lunar New Year this week, so we have a lot of great stuff for that. So it's a huge, um, uh, broad, all the subjects you could ever want. We're trying to make sure that there is something to appeal to everybody and that's getting pushed out. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. And so I have a comment that follows up with what, what you just said, which is that, um, this is a plug for, uh, the library's Twitter account. It is excellent. It's one of my favorite things to check on Twitter, second to Price Sujatha. But, um, but it's, it's really, um, a great resource and, and so credit to whoever puts out those tweets.
That is me. Thank you.
Excellent job. Excellent job.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, Miriam, how about you?
I've got anything? Miriam, oh, hold on, just, you're so quick there. Um, uh, so I just wanted to say that, um, you know, I'm, I'm now on the foundation board. I would echo, um, Suzanne's invitation to look at that cooking event. It's very nicely advertised. Um, but I did want to mention, I'm, I'm trying to work with them on additional solicitation opportunities. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Lisa Bryant and Cheryl Ann, their, um, development director, because they really have a lot of very ambitious plans. It's a hard year to start ambitious plans, but all the work that they do will ultimately benefit the library. And so it's all, uh, all benefiting each other and I'm very happy to work with them.
Thank you. Um, Phil, how about?
I have several comments. Number one, I'm very, very happy that Jessica's back, you know? Different times I, I, you know, I just appreciate the way she does things and how the library is, is running in her direction. Uh, secondly, Christine, I think, has done a beautiful job in filling in the blanks. Uh, Jessica's so competent that like I was five minutes late for the meeting tonight. And the stoplight is not working, it backlick in Fairfax County Parkway. So I'm hoping she could take care of that tomorrow. Morning.
Done already. I fixed it. It's good.
Secondly, the, uh, the POHIC, I'm a, a member of the POHIC friends. And they're going to make, they, they just have a Jessica knows and the staff knows. I mean, they just have a wonderful group of people that work there. And, uh, they're going to make a nice contribution to the foundation. Uh, she put it out for like a vote. I supported the contribution. Uh, the last I like to say is at one point that Swayther reached out to me and because we've seen things in a little different point of view. I would love to have coffee with you sometime where you and I could just sit down and talk. And so, uh, again, I thank you for being a member of the library board and uh, and would hope to make some of these meetings that we have and, um, these, uh, reach out meetings and also the finance committee meetings if I'm in town. So I, I hope everybody has a nice month. Uh, I've had my first vaccine shot, so I hope some of the rest of you have had the opportunity to get yours, so.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Jane, how about you?
Yes. So at our last meeting, we heard about the dark side of patrons relying too much on the library and being disappointed. Um, and so I reached out to my community and said, hey, uh, how about supporting our public servants at the libraries? Does any, anyone want to show appreciation? And, um, so I threw this out on Facebook and I just wanted to share in this public forum, some of the comments I got back. I heard from more than a hundred people who are served by Patrick Henry Oakton in Reston. Um, most of these comments include exclamation marks at the end. Um, I would not be sane without my weekly pickup of books. I am a serious library fan. That one did not have an exclamation point. That was serious.
Serious.
Libraries deserve love and appreciation. Uh, we love the curbside pickup grab bag that staff picks out for our six-year-old. We love curbside. Lets us keep our curious toddler in fresh books and keep our family and library staff safe. What's not to love? They've saved me many times this year with books for my kids, myself and my students. Our librarians go to great lengths to serve our community. They are amazing and I'm in love with my library. So happy Valentine's Day to all of our staff at all of our libraries. You guys are awesome.
Yay. Thank you, Jane. That was great. Um, let's see, Suzanne, I think I haven't called on you yet.
No, you haven't. And I actually have a couple of things to say. Um, I neglected to mention last month that our former colleague, Dr. Yuren Choi passed away. I believe it was January 7th.
I read that.
He evidently had pancreatic cancer. And on his Facebook page, they were taking donations for a Korean poetry festival at George Mason in honor of his favorite po- poet. And they've raised like double the amount of money that was asked for in this fundraiser online. So if, if you're on Facebook and want to check Dr. Choi's Facebook page, there's a lot of information. Um, I sat next to him. He was Phil's predecessor. And, um, he was certainly very interested in the library and it was an honor to, to sit with him and talk to him. And, um, the, I guess it was Geraldine Paulson, who was the librarian at Centerville and they did a Korean poet. I think he did a poetry reading at Centerville and she talked about how wonderful it was to have that program. So I just wanted to give a short tribute to Dr. Choi. Um, in talking about the awards committees and their announcements at ALA, there is an interview with Sandy, uh, Eklund on the library's Facebook page. She was on the, um, Newberry Committee a couple of years ago. And in her interview, she talks about the process and reading a thousand books that year and doing nothing else but read. So uh, take a look at that on the library's webpage. And finally, I just checked in with my local branch, Fairfax City, to see what was new and exciting there. And they are hosting an online coding club for kids 11 to 14, taught by local teens. So if you've got a teenager who's interested in coding, check out the programming at Fairfax City. Um, there's also an early, a new STEM-based early lit program called Science and Stories that their friends group funded. Um, so that Sandy Eklund also has recently presented about math-themed books to the Osher Learning Center class. Sandy has an master's degree in math, which is kind of unusual for most children's librarians. And I know she does a lot of math programming at Fairfax as well. And finally, the Virginia Room now has processed 44 boxes containing millions of images, um, from the Fairfax County Office of Public Affairs photograph collection. So if you've been to any one of those awards scrunches and gotten your picture taken, your picture, that picture is probably somewhere in the Virginia Room. When I was working there, we coveted that collection. And somehow or another, it came to the Virginia Room in 2018 and is now processed. So if you're looking for old county pictures, think of the Virginia Room.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Um, Brian? Brian, did you, did I talk? Had I called on you already?
No.
Okay, hit it.
Am I, can I? I really don't have much to say, except of course, welcome back, uh, real working forum to Jessica and thank you so much, Christine and Bobby. They did wonderful. real working forum to Jessica and thank you so much to Christine and Bobby. They did wonderful stuff. Branches here in Braddock District are, uh, trucking along. I've had some questions from individuals. When are they gonna reopen? And I just say, don't know, because we don't know. And we'll follow all guidelines for safety and so on, so. Supervisor Walkinshaw has been very concerned. He puts out a weekly Braddock Bulletin, which is nice, and I try to feed information into it. I'm, I haven't been quite as successful lately, I think, because he worries about the COVID and he had to stuff the bus program for food and things, so. So he's busy with lots of things and my point of contact happened to have retired from the staff and I've yet to be getting that, a new one. But I'll keep working on it, so. See y'all at outreach.
Thank you, Brian. And Liz?
Really have anything to report, but I was wondering with Erin, when Keith was saying, how do we advertise the library services? I know that, um, the police department, they're very effective, at least my local Sully one, in terms of using Nextdoor to talk about things like food drives, community, you know, for coats and things like that. And some of these more participatory, like the authors, um, talks, that might be something, um, to explore on Nextdoor to advertise that. I think people would really be interested. I personally don't understand Nextdoor, so I don't know how the police department does these massive communications out there. But they range from talking about COVID to, you know, different community events and, you know, drug exchange programs or whatever, return in. But some of the more interesting things, I think that would be, if there was a way, I think that would be a great, um, way to broaden the, the reach of, uh, the wonderful things the library's doing, but I, I personally cannot help out with that. Um, I don't really have anything else to say. I, um, I, Christine was very supportive in your absence and I can't say behind the scenes what she did for the staff and everything, but, uh, certainly, they, they all seem to be, uh, happy and moving along. And Jessica, I'm so glad you brought up Hannah because that was one of my big things for tonight. I was hoping to be able to see Hannah. And I'm sorry she's asleep, but I'm glad we're all back and we're all, uh, we're a full house here, so, um, should be interesting and hopefully, um, we'll have the award ceremony next month and, um, uh, don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Liz. And I'm sorry to say for you, but I did remember, um, oh, Sheila?
Okay, I have one thing. Um, I'm gonna say Jane is awesome. What she did not follow through on is when she reached out to the community, the community in Vienna and Reston decided that there needed to be staff appreciation. So, it was a couple of weeks ago, um, a group of Vienna citizens, residents, did a cakewalk and delivered to the Patrick Henry staff, nothing but Bund Cakes, which is a wonderful bakery. And then there was a local group put together, um, boxed lunches and these beautiful masks. And then Reston, of course, couldn't be left out, so this, um, her name is Katie Brown. She has volunteered to do the same thing for Reston staff, so on, um, next week, the day after I get my second, um, vaccine. Jerry, Ben and Jerry's Ice Cream is, is delivering ice cream for the staff and a bakery called Usu's Bakery. So it's, um, and a sign company here in Reston is making a big sign to put outside, um, the Reston Library to show their appreciation for the staff. So, um, I hope other communities kind of pick up on this staff appreciation.
You're showing us up here. You've raised the bar super high. Like, step it up, man.
Lots of fun.
Yeah, but on, but on the other hand, Jane is the at-large, so I think she does have to do everybody. Am I right? Am I right? So I just wanted to, um, give you another little report on Midwinter to get you excited about the possibility of going to the virtual ALA. So, the, I went to a pro, I did go to a program, but mostly I went to the, um, the celebrity talks because on virtual, it's really great because you don't have to look for a seat and it's not crowded. So I saw Ibram X. Kendi and Keisha and Blaine talk about their new book, Four Hundred Souls, A Community History of African, African American, sixteen, nineteen to twenty-nineteens. That was great. And then, um, Ziggy Marley, but then it went out, um, halfway through it, so I didn't get to see the whole thing. But my, my favorite was, well, the, the closing person was Dr. Joe Biden, so that was really great because she was just so enthusiastic about libraries. But I have to say, my favorite was Ethan Hawke, because I just was a little bit starstruck. Didn't expect it to be as cool as it was because he was, obviously, he's, he's kind of extroverted because he was saying he loves, he loves to get up and talk to people and it was really hard for him to do it virtually because he was just talking to a camera. But he was talking about his mother, what, had been an editor. So he had this, he grew up with this whole respect for the written word and all that. Then he talked about rehearsal of, um, a, a play, a different plays that he's been in. And, you know, after one of the rehearsals, I guess the playwright came to him and said, now that line, is the line, "Well, comma, that won't do," or just, "Well, that won't do." And I just felt so wonderful hearing about obsessing over a comma, being someone who often obsesses over a comma to the consternation of many people. So I was like, oh, Ethan Hawke, you got my heart now. Um, and his whole, uh, he linked it because the whole, um, importance of communication and the importance of libraries and respecting that, so, um, you know, it just, you know, just sit in your little office and have these celebrities talk to you. It's really great, so.
Brandon, before you adjourn, Christine, uh, wants to plan her insurrection and she has something she would like to say.
That's not a good word to use these days.
Actually, I don't want an insurrection. I just want to, Miriam said the bar's been raised and I wanna brag about Jane because Jane was too modest to mention that she came and visited library administration and gave us cookies that were about nine pounds apiece. It was a meal and then a dessert and then your next meal, all in one serving. It's phenomenal. So thank you, Jane. We enjoyed it very much. And if anyone else wants to deliver cookies, we're still at library administration.
I'll just say, those were not homemade cookies, so it's, it wasn't that high of a bar. But we have a new cookie place in Vienna that, I mean, they're like cake-sized cookies. They're pretty obnoxious and I was happy to hand them off.
We were happy to receive them.
Does anybody have anything else or are we ready for a motion to adjourn? I think we're ready. So do I have a motion?
Oh, moved.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Do we have a second? Thank you, Phil. Uh, shall we vote? All in favor of adjourn? Yay. Hey, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for a wonderful meeting, everybody. See you next month.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Bye.